We're at 7:15 and I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Gerard, councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'll ask all of those that are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have an agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Agenda is approved. Open forum this evening. Open forum is your time to talk to council about anything that is on your mind. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes if possible. And as you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. We have two individuals signed up. Barb Pribble.
Thank you. Mayor members of council, my name is Barb Pribble. I live at 21930 Harrow Avenue in Forest Lake on Castlewood Golf Course. You've been talking a lot tonight about community assets and money, and I'm here to talk about both of those things as well. I'm here to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, and that is the city's contract renewal with J.T. Walker Enterprises, which is Jeremy Walker's company, for the management of Castlewood Golf Course. It's my understanding from speaking with Mayor Bain, councilmember Beistrum, and Jeremy Walker personally, that after two and a half months of negotiations, the two parties have not been able to settle on a new contract with terms that are acceptable to both parties. I'm here tonight to urge the city to think out of the box for a solution in order to keep an exceptional and extremely valued contractor working on behalf of a valued city asset. I know all of you have heard extremely favorable feedback about the exceptional work that Jeremy has been doing managing the course, and I'm sure many here in the audience, I know there's several members from our men's league in the audience tonight, will attest to that. So I want to focus my comments on a few other main points. First is why we're here. And after 13 years of extremely hard work at Castlewood, eight years as a contracted manager, and five years prior to that, working as the course superintendent for then-manager Jim Trudeau, it's my understanding that Jeremy has decided he simply cannot continue to manage the course and make adequate profit without additional support from the city. It's my understanding the city has offered a modest amount to J.T. Walker Enterprises to assist with much-needed equipment repairs, and also proposed the city take a $2 cut from each cart rental and $3 from greens fees revenues to be placed into a dedicated city fund for future course improvements. Yet, without significantly raising prices, these amounts going back to the city will simply reduce revenue for J.T. Walker Enterprises even further. Coupled with the extremely high water table that frequently creates wet, unplayable conditions, and I live on the course, so believe me, I know what my yard is like, and several years of shortened seasons due to unseasonable weather, golf course management can be very difficult business financially. So I'm here tonight to urge the city to have a little bit more skin in the game, as it were, to management of its asset, Castlewood. Because one of the things I think has gone unacknowledged over the past 13 years is the tremendous investment in improvements that have been done to the course over the years at completely private expense. And I just want to talk briefly about some of those course improvements, because I'm not sure the council and staff are all that familiar with them. But since 2006, the two contractors, first was Jim Trudeau's company, which then was inherited by Jeremy, now J.T. Walker for the last eight years, have put in approximately $200,000 worth of improvements to Castlewood to improve playability and make for a more enjoyable course experience. $200,000 of private expense. These have included a new sand bunker on hole number six, elimination of a bunker on hole number five, drainage improvements to hole number six, an expanded pro shop, a new tee box on hole number nine, re-leveling of tee boxes on holes 1, 2, 5, and 6, new signage, new tee box markers, beautiful flowers and rock arrangements at each tee box, irrigation improvements and replacements, elimination of a water hazard on the first fairway, cleaning out of the woods and adding new landscaping between holes number 6 and 7, extensive annual tree trimming, extensive cleanup after a tornado damage in July 27 that wiped out several large trees, and my husband also went out there with a chainsaw, planting of new trees per the tree preservation clause that was added into the last contract, which he has not even been able to continue putting those trees in just because financially it's just too difficult. In contrast, here's what the city's done. New culverts in front of the maintenance shed, new tin roof on the pro shop in the pump house, new panel in the irrigation pump house, and replacement of rusted-out culverts. So over 13 years, there's been some done by the city, but compared to the $200,000 that Jeremy has put in, not a lot. And so the saddest part about that to me is that I don't think that the city has really paid that much attention or appreciates that tremendous investment. And it just seems like, from Jeremy's standpoint, he kind of was frustrated that he was the one that had to initiate the contact with the city two and a half months ago, saying, hey, my contract's coming up for renewal, when really it should have been the other way around. Anyways, after 13 years, if his contract is not renewed, he's leaving the city with $200,000 worth of improvements that he's personally paid for, or Jim's personally paid for, Jeremy's paid for it because he inherited the debt from Jim, and he's not taking it with it, you know? The course is in the best shape it's ever been in 13-plus years, and he's leaving it in a pristine shape. It's my understanding that the course operations run around $200,000 a year, and he's lucky if he keeps 12%. So he's certainly not making a living out there. The course is approximately 30 to 35 acres, so even if at some future point the course was not a course and was a park, lawn mowing costs alone would far exceed the amount that the city's offering in the latest contract. The reality of going out for an RFP. In 2006, I volunteered as a resident member on the task force that managed the RFP process to find a new management company, which had been greatly neglected and poorly managed for years. Castlewood was, as Jerry talked about, getting behind the eight ball. Yeah. These last 13 years, we've caught up, because it had gone greatly neglected and was in bad shape. But we cast a wide net in our attempt to solicit proposals, and in the end, we received one proposal, that's right, one proposal, from Jim Trudeau's company. So frankly, I think there was very little interest in the community, or in the industry from anyone, because they could see how limited the opportunity was to make any money without 18 holes and a restaurant and a clubhouse, a driving range, or other source of revenue. Jim Trudeau and his business partner, Don, were both retired, so making money for themselves was not their goal. Their goal was to create a beautiful community asset as a family-friendly, affordable activity for the community that they loved. And Jeremy has continued that goal, but not being retired himself, he needs to be able to make a living. In my conversation with Mayor Bain last Friday, she informed me that the city had been approached by a couple of entities over the summer that had expressed potential interest in managing the course. However, if I was a betting woman, my guess is that an RFP process will likely yield the same minimal interest that it did back in 2006. It's also my understanding, unfortunately, that immediately after Jeremy determined he could not accept the terms of the latest contract offer, someone representing the city made a phone call within 15 minutes, not to Jeremy to express gratitude for the many years of exceptional service, but rather to the operator of another local course inquiring about their interest in managing Castlewood. A little bit like "Don't let the door hit ya." My last point to emphasize is just about what makes Castlewood special. It's the players and the friendship everyone has with Jeremy. He's not just the course manager, he's family to everyone out there. Living on the course, I see who plays out there besides the league players, and it's not uncommon to see three generations of a family playing together, including grandchildren as young as four or five years old. Seniors are out there in force as well. And that's because Castlewood is a welcoming golf course, and it's affordable too. And if another contractor is chosen to manage the course, it's likely that would all change. Fees would likely increase, families would feel less welcome, the entire course would lose the atmosphere of being one big family. Forest Lake would lose. It's been a fantastic 13 years, and the course is in the best shape it has ever been in. And if the city handles this right, our community can have another fantastic decade or two. Thank you for your time, and thank you in advance for your willingness to see if you can get J.T. Walker back to the table and come to a creative agreement that will be beneficial for both parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Rand Stevens?
Hi, I'm Rand Stevens. I've lived in Forest Lake since 1973. I've played, I can't follow that. Very good job. I've played there probably for over 30 years. I've been a league member for 20 to 25 years. I remember when they called Castlewood Castle Rock, and it was Castle Rock. It was a rock. It was barren. It was dead grass and weeds and everything else. And when Jeremy came in, we noticed a lot of changes. And I'm, there's a lot of people that have been there in the leagues longer than I have, and of course, we brag about it. It's plush green, the greens are soft, receptive. There's no bear spots. It's beautiful green. It's, we love playing there, and we'd hate to lose out on having a guy like Jeremy leave us. And I think he's just done such a terrific job. Even this spring, when we had the, there was a lot of winter kill in the greens throughout the golf courses in the Twin City area, and we saw it at Tanner's and Forest Hills, and some courses were shut down for part of the summer, private courses in the Twin Cities. And Jeremy knew what to do as far as before that happened. He was out there cleaning off greens, and he didn't get the winter kill. So I mean, it's, I think he's a true asset to have as far as at Castlewood, and I'd just hate to, we'd hate to see him go. So anything that could be done to bring this guy back would be much appreciated, and I think would benefit this community for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That closes tonight's open forum. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Items 6A through 6Y this evening. We have a long consent agenda. I will add, under the motion that we remove item 6E, the Minnesota DNR Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement, have a quick item of update on that. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D and F through Y.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next agenda item this evening, 6E, Minnesota DNR Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement. Patrick, I believe there's just a minor change.
A minor change. The agreement states that it's an agreement between the DNR and the fire department. We'd just like to change that to DNR and the city. That's the only change.
Any questions related to the agreement? Happy to entertain. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion that we approve the agreement based on the changes that Patrick just explained.
Second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda item. First item on our regular agenda is the CBRE Real Estate Listing Agreement for the Headwaters 123 property. Dan Undem, are you going to kick us off for this?
Yeah, I'll start us off, and then Dan Peterson will finish it off here. So, give me some screen. Mayor members of council, just again to give you a little bit of background on the work that's been done on this parcel to date. We've had quite a bit of work done at the EDA level. I just wanted to get council aware of all the work that has been done, and then kind of the next steps in where we are with this particular parcel of land. So the parcel, the question is, the Headwaters 123 acres, it's located just south of the YMCA. You'll see the parcel here on your screen. It's the one that's a lighter shade from the rest of the color. It's this entire piece here. It's 123 acres, and over the past year, we've been actively involved in the evaluation of whether or not this parcel would fit the criteria for a data center. And I want to just mention as well that a lot of the work that we've done to date has been through partnerships with the Washington County CDA and the members of the Minnesota Technology Corridor. In particular, I want to thank Connectus Energy to help fund a couple of the studies that we use on this one. So I just wanted to say that this work was not just on here as a partnership, there's a lot larger effort involved to get it to where it was today. But just some of the highlights of the work that we've done is that we put it through a data center site assessment through Great River Energy. We basically kind of looked at it like a shovel-ready criteria, and we put it through that scoring system. We've completed a Phase 1 environmental, we've completed a wetland delineation. The site is currently listed with the Minnesota Technology Corridor as a premier site. We also have it on Invest in Forest Lake. One thing that Connectus Energy helped us do is we actually did some drone flyovers using LiDAR, so we actually have some very detailed flyover imagery of the site that is actually also can be exported as a 3D model. So we have some pretty unique measurements or site flyover characteristics that were done. We also had LATV staff fly and do a drone promotional video for it, so they went out in the spring and shot this fantastic drone flyover promotional video. So we've been involved in not only the study of it, but also started looking at the marketing. And the big reason we wanted to do a lot of the, kind of the legwork on the groundwork for the study aspect of it, wanted to make sure that as we get to the stage where we are today, that there's nothing that's going to kind of come out of the woodwork that would kind of eliminate this from use as a potential data center. So we want to do our homework first, before we start looking at agents to represent the property. That being said, we did meet with Dan Peterson from CBRE. He's a data center specialist with the firm. He's here tonight to kind of talk about his background a little bit and what he sees in the site, but just wanted to get council aware of what the EDA has been working on in terms of preparing this site for potential listing with an agent.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers.
You were here for the EDA meeting, and you now sat through a budget meeting. You know way more than you ever wanted to know about the city, Forest Lake budget, so thank you for being here.
I feel well-informed.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, as I said before, and I'll repeat now for you guys, my name is Dan Peterson, and I'm with CBRE, and we're one of the, we are the world's largest commercial real estate services firm. And in that, we have a specialized practice that we've been doing for over 20 years in data center solutions. And what that means is that we work with everybody from end-users to investors to operators in the data center space. And just to give you some context, last year, if you're familiar with what is a metric in our space, we did over 400 megawatts of transactions last year. That translates, in data center speak, to about $1.8 billion of data center-related real estate. With that comes a lot of exposure to this relatively specialized group. And I, for one, have been a broker in Minnesota for about 18 years, but have worked in this specialization for about 10 now. Some of the things that Dan mentioned before is part of the reason that this site is on our radar, and why we felt we could help out the city with this in bringing it out to our audience, if you will, that we work with. Not only do does CB work in the industrial space, in the multifamily space, and all the other ones of the commercial field, but the depth and breadth of what we do in data centers, I think, well suits us to assist you folks with bringing this to the ones that are sometimes doing this from a very distant level, from an international or national basis, where they're looking through some portal, or they're looking, contacting within contacts of support systems like engineering firms to understand more details about sites. We work in those realms. Or they are using traditional commercial channels like Mincar or Catalyst, if you're familiar with that, as traditional real estate listing services that we use in the commercial space. So we see that there's a wonderful combination of efforts here that can lead to, hopefully, a successful outcome. And as we've talked about this in some of the discussions in the past, it's about keeping this on a national radar, but also having a local presence. And I think that's what we're well-suited to help you with in this endeavor. So if there's any questions you have for me, I certainly hope to.
Questions from council? Mr. Peterson, or questions of staff?
I did have a, so, had the benefit of listening to the broader conversation that the EDA had, and I did have a question, and we ran a little bit out of time to get it answered. I'll ask it now. This is a one-year listing on a property that I would love to see move in a year, but that may or may not be realistic. So how will you be measuring success along the way to gauge level of investment and activities? And how will we be communicating throughout that year around what that current marketing plan is, level of resources, so we can tell within the year if we should be scaling efforts up or down? Or what does that look like for you? I could use a little bit more granularity about what does that work plan look like?
Sure.
So that we get to the end of the year feeling like we've done something. It may or may not have resulted in a successful transaction, but I want to just, a little more clarity there of what that work plan looks like.
Sure, sure. So, I mean, some of it is a specific aspect of some cadence in communication between us. How are we, first, in the rollout, how we're compiling the information, and then we're presenting it to the marketplace, and how we're bringing that out to that specific audience. You're going to have feedback within the first cycle of our communication about what audience is looking at this, what audience is requesting more information. Obviously, we want to have this, the positive feedback outside of a transaction is that this is getting into the site selection folks' list of potential sites under consideration. When there, it may not just be Minnesota, it might be Texas, it might be Iowa. As long as we're in that game, that's going to be some success benchmarks that we want to try to achieve in that year, so that there's awareness. So proving the awareness, the communication back to the council about that awareness, and having a regular reporting mechanism for that. And we can do that on about as frequent a basis as the council and the city really wants to see, but in all honesty, it works well on a monthly or quarterly basis, based on land sales and traditionally what happens.
Yes. Very good. Other questions of?
What are your potential clients looking for in terms of site selection? And you can go into as much detail as, I mean, I know that's a really big, broad question, but if you can try to drill it down in a way that I can understand, what makes this particular site attractive to the folks that you're marketing to?
It's a good question, and we get asked that a lot, because sometimes, some of the attributes that draw someone to a site ends up being rather subjective, but the practical ones are risk profile and the geography, and I can go into that, how it's proximity to things like pipelines and transit and these kinds of things. The network or the fiber attributes as it supports the site, certainly the other utilities, whether it's the water, electricity, especially electricity, how the grid feeds that particular site. These are all checkboxes that, as Dan mentioned before, they're going through those things in a proactive sense, so that folks looking at this understand that those pieces are met. We typically see about anywhere from 50 to 300 checkmarks on a site selection exercise for these folks. But the size certainly allows it to be considered for a multitude of different types of execution. If it's a smaller data center, that they have a campus ability to phase a development approach, that's an attribute they may be looking at. I've been involved in transactions where we're doing a one-off enterprise data center in the middle of an office park too, and it's more about the rooftops around it, and so that's an attribute that they're looking for. So it really depends on what type of data center you're talking about, enterprise being a private business, third-party service provider, or maybe something larger like the hyperscale cloud providers. It all depends on what kind of end-user of that data center you're talking about, but for the most part, it's that infrastructure support, it's that connectivity, and then that proximity to transit. I mean, we're close enough to the International Airport, which is a very attractive hub for mid-continent right now, and then the other attributes that we've discussed earlier this evening, which were incentives at the state level. So we have some specific incentives in this state that are meant to attract data center users.
I could just add one thing on the power side, too. One thing that makes this particular site pretty unique in terms of Minnesota is that this is kind of at the edge of Connectus' territory and the edge of Excel. So if they're looking for redundancy in their data, in their electrical providers, we're right here, and we have both Excel and Connectus as part of the tech corridor, so they're already talking, already talked about partnerships. So when they're looking for both fiber redundancy and electrical redundancy, this site fits those boxes, so that's why it's been ranking so high consistently in all the studies that we have, where it's, we're at that kind of overlap of current areas right now.
Do you anticipate utilization of the full, or request to utilize that full 123 acres? I know that there's been some interest in a piece of this property in the past, and I'm just curious as to, you know, I mean, I don't know what a typical footprint, you know, for something like this is, so if you can kind of help me understand that?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it.
I'll go, I could, I'll give a lawyer's answer and say it depends. It's nice to have a big basket, so someone can pick out a piece. And if a user comes along and they want one piece of that, well, then I'm glad that we didn't pick off a bunch of other pieces out of the basket before they had the chance to look at that. As I mentioned earlier, there may be a user that wants to do a phased approach, and for them to see an attractive amount of acreage for a phased development of a campus, very much could be a scenario that we see, and we see it in other places. There are certain cloud providers that really execute a strategy that's specific to that. On the other end of the scale, 123 acres isn't enough for some. Maybe they would be looking at doing a much larger assembly, and I'm involved in a listing similar characteristics down in Van Meter, which is west-west Des Moines, which is very much an active belt for this type of activity right now. And that 120-acre site is just one component of a 400-acre assembly that those kinds of groups need to see. So it really depends on who we're talking about. If I was a betting man, I would say that it will be something a little less than 123 that someone would execute on, based on what we see in the marketplace.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the city's, you know, made a determination around use of that property, and we have pursued technology, the technology corridor and that sector. But talk to me and give council an update on other sectors represented by CBRE, or how you will partner with those other sectors to make sure we have, so I want to make sure we're not being too myopic in this next, and so how do we have the broader representation of other sectors as well?
Sure, sure. And as I mentioned just a bit earlier, and coming up just now, CBRE has coverage in all these segments of commercial real estate. And as part of listing with our firm, it is a sound strategy on the part of a specialist like myself to have a land partner, a land broker, that works in a more local aspect on these kinds of properties. And so I will partner with someone within my office that works on land sales, both in industrial, multifamily, just basically a land broker that will then be incentivized through my listing, or our listing, to promote this property to the general market. Simultaneously, because it's a commercial property that we list, we put it through our traditional marketing channels, which is the Catalyst Listing Service that Mincar is part of the association of commercial brokers in this region also market their properties on. So it's going to have exposure to those audiences, from a marketing standpoint, through our firm, throughout the whole process. It's just my role in that is a larger pool with a more specific audience on a national basis, if that answers the question.
Thank you. Council, any other questions of, any other questions in general on this topic? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion on our resolution this evening on this particular item, it's on page 1, before I take that back.
Madam Mayor.
No, there is not a resolution for this item. It is a staff recommendation.
The, Madam Mayor, being that the EDA made a recommendation to the city council to accept this listing agreement, I make a motion that we go ahead with the listing agreement for the Headwaters 123 property.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Husnick, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, there was a presentation to the EDA earlier this evening on this exact topic, and they did vote unanimously to approve as well. With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda this evening is 7B, Resolution 1291903, which is a donation from Birchwood Healthcare Center for fire prevention materials. Al, anything you'd like to add on this? He shakes his head, no. I think it's fairly straightforward. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 12-09-1903, donation of $163.15 from Birchwood Healthcare Center for fire prevention education materials, with gratitude.
I'll second.
All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another donation, this time for the Hometown Holiday Event, Resolution 1291904. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of Resolution 12-09-1904, resolution accepting donations in the amount of $100, plus an in-kind contribution.
in the amount of $100 plus an in-kind contribution from the Forest Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, and in-kind donations from Kodiak Coffee and Vanelle's by the lake, all for the city's hometown holiday event, again with gratitude.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to item 7D, Trunk Highway 97 and at Keswick Avenue, North Shore Trail roadway lighting agreement. Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, in your packet, you have a lighting maintenance agreement that's been discussed with MINDOT, part of the project developments at the intersection improvements for North Shore Trail and Highway 97 that MINDOT plans to construct this summer. As part of that project developments, MINDOT was willing to provide lighting within the project construction bid if the city were to take ownership and maintenance of the lighting system, which includes two streetlights, which is normal in this situation. To execute the agreement, make it formal, agreements within for consideration. If you do approve the agreement, then the two streetlights will be constructed as part of the intersection improvements, and the construction costs will go towards MINDOT's, and then the city will take ownership and maintenance of the two streetlights moving forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions of, any questions from council to staff?
I just had a question. I noted on page 205, it mentioned that the city will pay monthly costs. Can you elaborate on that?
Power, electricity.
Okay. I mean.
We do that on all our streetlights.
Okay.
Other than, we did negotiate that with the double roundabout, which was the first time we got out of that because of the separate circuit there.
Okay.
So.
So even a state highway like a, we?
They would not put streetlights out there.
Okay.
It's been something that's been in discussion for a number of years. We did put temporary lights out there through a public works request, but they're not adequate for what's needed out there for safety purposes. And with the expansion of the intersection, it would only get a wider footprint. That's why we wanted MINDOT to early in this project. This has been, you know, kind of in the works for a long time. This, they're just finalizing their contract stuff now before they actually solicit bids. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Yeah, it was just a curiosity question more than anything. And then it also indicated maintenance, ownership and operation responsibility of the city, but work performed by the state. Is that the installation work, or is it the?
So MINDOT, just like we do with some of our, like our HOCS system downtown, they actually do the maintenance. And some, some of our projects, they do the materials testing too, and they submit the invoice for that work.
Okay.
The city doesn't have any on-staff certified state electrical people. Thus, all that work has to be contracted out regardless. Who do you even, do you like the county streetlights?
St. Paul Utilities.
St. Paul. So they have other staff too, but it's the less, so they have that in-house.
No, no doubt they're needed there. I just was curious about those two pieces of the, of the contract. So thank you, Ryan.
Any other further questions? I'll just note, it's a nice improvement to that intersection to get adequate lighting out there. That is a dangerous intersection that we hear all sorts of feedback on, and it's one step of making that safer. So thank you to staff to getting it to this point. It's a nice improvement.
I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 12-09-1905, the trunk Highway 97 at Keswick Avenue and North Shore Trail roadway lighting agreement.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And moving right along, 7E, we have ordinance 692, which is the 2020 fee schedule. Karen, you want to just walk us through, this item has been workshopped, and just want to walk us through where we've landed for final adoption?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me. The fee schedule, the way it was presented at the, would have been the meeting before November 25th, I don't think there were any significant changes after that that didn't appear to be. So it was really just a matter of getting it to the city attorney, having her go through it, make sure that it read appropriately. And then there is, because of the length of the fee schedule as an ordinance, there's a summary resolution that needs to be voted on. That's basically it.
And council, that resolution for ordinance 692 is on page 225 of your packet.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of Resolution 12-09-1906, a resolution approving the summary publication of ordinance 692 as codified in Title III, Chapter 35 of the city code, and the city's fee schedule and establishing fees and charges for licenses, permits, services, and other charges within the city of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Point of clarification, so there's actually two different items that need to be approved tonight. The first is the ordinance adopting the fee schedule changes, and the second is the resolution approving summary publication. So it's fine to go ahead and vote on it, but then we need to go back and adopt the ordinance. So, sorry, just want to make sure that was clear.
Page number, I should have brought that as well.
216.
216?
No, no, bust the back, I'm sorry. It starts on 211. That's the ordinance. And then the resolution is 2. Thanks.
And we're voting on the resolution.
The motion was the resolution.
Motion was the resolution. Is everybody clear? The motion's on the resolution, and then we will go back and vote on the ordinance? All right, so all of those in favor of the motion for the resolution, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carry. Bridget, thank you for catching this. And then let's go back for ordinance 692, which is the adoption of the fee schedule. I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 692.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Bridget. Next item is 7F, donation of temporary and permanent easements and conveyance of real property at Highway 97 and Goodview. Ryan, is this?
I'll take it. Basically, it's just a formal process here to meet state statute federal requirements if, if the paperwork is requested. We were able to successfully build a partnership with the school district and the Messiah Church in acquiring easements in property at no cost to the project. So that was very favorable for both parties to work with us on that and reinvest that money into other infrastructure projects instead of, you know, basically paying for unusable land. Some of it's temporary easement, and with the school district, it was permanent easement. So very gracious on their considerations, and this is just a resolution to finalize that.
Very good. Resolution for your consideration is on page 229 of your council, council packet.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 12-9-1907, approval and acceptance of donation of temporary and permanent easements and conveyance of real prop, real property for the proposed roundabout at the intersection of Trunk Highway 97 at Goodview Ave and 8th Street.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just really impressed by the spirit of the collaboration and cooperation between the city and the Messiah Church and the school district. That was really, really impressive to read.
Much appreciated on the partnership with both the church and the school district on partnership on this, on allowing us to not use funds for acquisition of land, but instead overall infrastructure improvement. So many thanks. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. 7G, new hire of building official position. Al?
Mayor and council, in front of you today is a recommendation to hire Corey Murphy as a city building official. Corey has 15 years in, 15 years in municipal building inspection operations, comes with a background with landlord and municipal code or renter, renters code. Corey has held the position of inspector, building official. He's developed municipal code inspections in other cities. And it's important to note during this interview process that we also brought in a contractor from the city of Forest Lake to be part of the hiring panel to get their feedback in it as well.
Great idea. Council recommendation is in front of you on page 266 of your packet. Any questions of Chief Newman?
Chief, can you, so we've had a lot of conversation about the need for customer service in this department and need for that to be a focus going forward. And I love that you brought a contract, you brought a customer to the table for the interview. Can you talk about overall just perspective on how you, how you kind of measured attention to customer service and your thoughts during the interview process, since that was an important feature?
Well, there's a few different directions we went with that. We had scenario-based questions to find out what that person or that candidate, how they felt on the code, whether they're an enforcer or an educator. Asked them to pride, or provide specific instances that they've ran into and how they've dealt with that difficult issues, maybe working with a difficult contractor, or working with a scenario where the code just didn't fit the project and how they handled that. We also checked on references that were extremely favorable for the customer service aspect of this particular candidate, and we're excited to bring him aboard.
Customer service is my biggest pet peeve. I've made it, those comments several different times. So I've not met this gentleman yet, and so hope to, I hope to do that before he comes on board. So.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And I would just add that, you know, echo and, and add that considering the conversations that we've had about, you know, zoning code and code enforcement and needing to do some restructuring within that department, that this individual seems really well-qualified and experienced in that regard. So it appears to be a really good hire. Is this a similar pay scale as our previous building official?
It is. The previous building official was a grade 12.
Okay.
Well, but in the top step. And so this individual will start in the same grade at step one.
Okay. Thank you.
The whole thing, a lot of this stuff with building officials boils down to common sense. You know, the code is black and white, but when you get on a job site, sometimes that isn't the case.
Application.
Yeah, so.
And process and communication.
Exactly. Education and, and doing it right, so.
Right. Madam Mayor, I move approval to hire Corey Murphy to the position of building official per Chief Newman's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And next item on our agenda is Economic Development Authority seat appointment. I will take this one. Council in front of you, you have a printed copy of the EDA appointment recommendation. As you know, we had an EDA member who resigned earlier in the year, and that seat has been open. We had the benefit of having a number of interested candidates for this position that I have spoken with. My recommendation this evening and for your consideration is the appointment of Leif Erickson to take the remaining term of what was Member Archer's position. So it would go until the end of 2021. Leif has a deep financial background, currently serves with or is with Thrivant as a personal financial planner, and just has a great interest in community development, a strong financial background, and I will appreciate that expertise on the EDA, and just a good perspective within the community. And for those reasons, I am recommending his appointment. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the appointment of Leif Erickson to the Economic Development Authority.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 7I, ACE hardware invoices. I will entertain a motion to approve.
May I make a motion to approve the ACE hardware invoices?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain. One abstention. Motion carries. Moving on to the discussion-only portion of our agenda this evening. Ryan, the 2019 year-end review?
Mayor, City Council, within your packet is just something I've done annually, just to kind of do a year-end review of some of the major infrastructure projects and planning items that we've been working through over the last year. Just kind of a nice time to reflect and look back on some of the things you guys were able to accomplish, and a lot of the decisions that went into each and one of those bullet points. And then I just kind of outlined what other funding mechanisms that were brought forward, and then it's kind of shown at the bottom, reiterating our commitment to the community through involvements whenever we can, be involved in the fun stuff too in the community. So something I've done annually. It's not obviously a comprehensive list, but just gives you kind of a reflection of where you guys have, have been all over the last year. So something fun. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
You've been busy.
Quick point of clarification, midway through, it says 2017 grants obtained related to, is that 2019?
I did not. Yes. I missed the one. I must have got tired.
I just wanted to confirm it was this year.
It's a copy paste.
I get.
Well, it's fun. I have it every year I've done. So every once in a while, I'll go back and look at the first few years and what, you know, you can see when you came, the city came out of the bad economy and how things are just crazy right now.
I just want to make sure we're getting that $1.6 million in 2019 and that it wasn't two years old.
Or we could have got it in 17 with interest.
Oh, there you go. Well, thank you, Ryan. And I also love the community involvement section at the bottom. I'm assuming you're going to start recruiting for Rotary pledges right after the first of the year?
Dang.
Head-to-head, head-to-head combat with Lila once again.
Yes.
We're looking forward to that.
Any questions for Ryan on the year-end review?
No, just a really impressive list, and we've been busy.
Yeah.
Busy year. So, good work.
And I will also add, with excellent service. So thank you. You're always available and very knowledgeable, and I really appreciate your responsiveness, so, and expertise and guidance on these projects. Much appreciated. Okay, we are going to move on to staff updates. Chief Newman?
The only notable update that I have is earlier this evening, we hit 500 runs for the year, which is higher than the 487 that we had from 2018.
Is that our highest ever?
It is.
Any notable trends, any things that are?
I think one of the biggest factors today was the freeway construction.
Yeah.
We did a lot of auto aid with Lionel Lakes, which typically we hadn't done in the past. And now that that construction project is fairly complete, we have canceled the auto aid. So hopefully next year, we won't see the impact that we did this year with the construction.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Chief Newman? Sandy?
Now that it is the end of the year, now I will be working with the auditors to be getting an audit timeframe. So we're working on possibly in April, getting an auditor here to do our audit. So we will be doing a lot of preparation in the meantime, and I will get to the date at a later time.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Sandy? Nice work on the presentation earlier today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
I just want to provide, council, the update. The Hardwood Creek WMA meeting that was discussed during the last workshop has been scheduled for this Thursday. So staff is meeting with Washington County Staff DNR to go over, all the stakeholders are going to be assembling on Thursday, the 12th of this month. So that is scheduled. And I also wanted to pass along that the Minnesota Technology Corridor was just selected by the Minnesota Association of Professional County Economic Developers to, as their Project of the Year. So they won the 2019 Achievement Award. So all the counties got together, and the Minnesota Technology Corridor won the 2019. So all the counties got together and Minnesota Technology Corridor won the 2019 award. Net award will be awarded, I believe, next Wednesday, or this Wednesday on the 11th. Congratulations to the Technology Corridor for winning.
Excellent. Will there be a press announcement from the tech corridor for that? And if there is, can we piggyback on that? And if there isn't, can we do just some announcement?
Yep, I'll follow up with Jacalle. She kind of was running the lead on that one, so I'll follow up with Jacalle on what the press rollout is for that.
Great opportunity to get the tech corridor back out there again, so. Any questions for Dan? Chief Peterson?
No, there's no updates from me. The only thing is if we end up not seeing each other until after the new year. Have a happy holidays and a safe holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Peterson? All right, thank you. Sandy?
Karen.
Karen, sorry. What's your name again? I'm sorry.
It's all right. No comments.
It's been a long night.
Oh, boy. Patrick?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the council and city staff for the budget process. I think it went really smooth and worked real hard. I think it was an exceptional process and without a lot of tears and ringing of... So I'd also like to thank Jamie, the Parks, Lakes and Trails Committee and all her volunteers for the event over the weekend. It was both the indoor and the tree lighting was both well-attended and a real nice event, so that's all.
Perfect. Thank you. Bridgette?
No update, thank you.
Very good. Ryan, anything further?
No more updates.
Excellent. Dave?
Just one quick thing. They drive carefully the next few days. Salt does not work when it's five below. So the roads are slick, they're going to stay slick for the next few days, so just drive safely out there.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Munson?
You know, I would just echo Patrick's. Thank you to Parks, Trails and Lakes and Jamie for just an amazing event. It's been great looking at all the pictures that have been on Facebook of those kiddos that have sat with Santa and with Olaf, who seemed to be pretty popular as well. And just wanted to thank Mayor Bain for inviting the council up and kind of switching up tradition and allowing us to be a part of the tree lighting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being there.
Councilmember Bystrom?
Just have received quite a bit of communication on the Castlewood Golf Course Management Agreement and, you know, encouraged several of these folks to attend tonight, so it was good to see them, so they could have their voice be heard. I too want to thank Jamie, our Parks, Trails and Lakes Coordinator. And to echo Patrick's sentiments, the move to the indoors for a portion of that was, I think, was really a wonderful change for that event. If you remember last year, we were outside for quite a while and it was really, really cold. And the variety of activities that they had going on for the kids throughout the building, utilizing the whole building, I just think was, you know, really, really a positive change. And then the tree lighting, of course, and I agree, thank you Mayor Bain for being inclusive of the whole council during that tree lighting piece. And then I just wanted to, I know this is our last meeting for the year. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank city staff Administrator Casey for welcoming me this first year and willingly answering sometimes very painful questions and being patient. And I just really consider it an honor to be here and I just wanted to thank everybody and wish everybody happy holidays.
Excellent. Councilman Presnick?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. See, I think I made about three meetings. One of them was the EDA tonight and as you were there. And the main thing that was talked about was the real estate listing agreement, so we all heard about that. The other thing that I attended was the airport commission meeting last Wednesday. And there were several things that we went over with the engineers at that particular meeting. And one of the things we were trying to get done there is talking about the demographics there and just how many airplanes are used in our airport and for what reason and that kind of thing. There was some concern about helicopters coming in for medical reasons and not having a pad, you know, and all that. And then after talking to my son, who is a professional, who's flown for North Carolina for several years, he said, "They make their own arrangements to do that kind of stuff." So it really is, really is up to them to train their people and, you know, where to meet and that kind of thing. And they can land anywhere now because they, you know, there's plenty of blacktop and that kind of thing. So just those sorts of things that we, that we went over at that meeting. Also then on Thursday, I attended the school board meeting and they, of course, they went through their truth and taxation thing. I missed that portion of it. I just couldn't get there that time. But their normal meeting, their student achievements and their reports and workshops and that kind of thing, same as we do. And most of it was border plate stuff, certifying the 2019 property taxes, technology acceptability, all kinds of different. The new business is going to be what they're doing with out-of-state travel by school board members. There was a new resolution there. School transportation safety policy, harassment, violent policy, and new course proposal. So they've been busy also. And one thing that I'm really happy about, I think, is that the communication between our council and the school board is getting better. Has nothing to do with me. I think it just has to do with this council and I'm really happy about that because, again, it's all part of the transparency thing. And people need to really know what's going on, where the tax dollars go and how it's being spent, so. Thanks a lot. That's all I have.
Thank you. Real quick update from me. I'll echo everyone's comments about a great event on Saturday. Just knocked it out of the park, in my opinion. It was great to see so many families sitting together here at the building. And then it was great to see, I was a little nervous about migrating folks to the park. And we had a very full building here and we had a very full park, and so I think it was just a great success. So kudos to Parks, Lakes and Trails and Jamie for listening to community feedback and creating an even bigger event. And I can't wait to see what we're going to do next year. This is our last meeting of the year, so thank you to everybody for all of the great work in 2019. I wish you all a very happy holiday and enjoy some time, recharge. We have a full slate of things to do that we have said we want to get done next year, so look forward to that. Quick administrative note, I did take a look today at the commission appointments that we have expiring. We have positions on Parks, Lakes and Trails and the EDA and one planning commission position that are all expiring this year. I will be circling back with those members and ask if they are open to reappointment. And we'll be making those considerations here over the next few weeks. And so if any of you have individuals that you would be interested in getting nominated, now is a great time to do so. There is a link out on our website. And I will be both circulating to those that are currently serving to see if there's a position for an interest in reappointment and then considering new applications as well. And then also just council, in your spare time over the holidays, think about your liaison appointments. Traditionally, we reconsider those in January, and so consider what's working with your schedule, what's not working with your schedule, areas of interest, and I'm happy to reshuffle the deck however you see fit. So we'll take that into the new year and wish everyone a very happy holidays. So thank you and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, could I speak one more thing, please? This past week, kind of a tragic thing happened in northern Minnesota here, up in the Saint Cloud area. And I just want everybody to kind of remember these young men and their families so close to the holidays. Terrible thing. And so just so we can kind of remember those folks and go from there. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And we're adjourned.